Franklin County Boulder County Commissioner is now in session. Commissioner Jones would you lead us in the prayer and pledge, please, sir?
Yes, sir. My heavenly Father, we thank you for this day you've given to each and every one of us. We ask that you would be with us here in this room today. Fathers, we discuss, as we understand, comprehend, make good and pertinent decisions, not only for this day, but for every day that you shall give us. Thank you for this place we call home in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with due liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Next on the agenda will be approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masti.
Your second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passed unanimously. Next on the agenda will be payments of the county bills.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bird, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passed unanimously. Public comments?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Pat O'Connell. I'm the Chair of your Franklin County Complete Count Committee for Census 2020. I'm here to introduce a partner who's just joined with us with our complete count effort. We, as you know, we've had a shortage of funds that some of the other communities have enjoyed for billboards and posters and all of public awareness. And Waste Pro has stepped up and they are contributing to our effort. And I want to introduce Lloyd Childery, who is their Government Relations Person for Waste Pro.
Okay.
Thank you, Pat, Mr. Commission, Commissioner. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to do this.
Let me get your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Lloyd Childery. I'm with Waste Pro in eighty-four, eighty-seven Congressional Drive up in Tallahassee. But, you know, Pat gave me a call last week and told me a little bit more about the census that I knew and how important it was to the community to get their fair share of the dollars available through the federal government. Without those numbers, you know, how difficult it can be to get those dollars. So when she walked me through it, I said, of course, we partner with her and with the community and hopefully we'll get the word out and get a good census this year. But appreciate the opportunity to be part of the community again. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for doing it.
Sir.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Donna Butterfield. First, I would like to welcome the team from Texas A&amp;M Center for Optimizing Rural Health. I hope that they have a pleasant stay in our beautiful community. A couple of meetings ago, Michael Morone announced the grant for this group to evaluate Weems Memorial Hospital. The news was met with smiles and excitement. I frankly didn't understand the enthusiasm. Maybe some misunderstood the use of the word "grant." This group is not bringing any money to Weems. The grant was from the federal government to Texas A&amp;M to pay them to come here to evaluate problems at Weems. Another evaluation to tell us what is wrong at Weems? In April 2019, a forty-three-page evaluation of Weems was presented by the Florida Department of Health called the Flex Report. It too found major problems at Weems with suggestions on how to try to fix things. The Texas A&amp;M webpage is really forthright about their mission and the reality of the future of rural health care. The center, this is from their webpage, "The center concentrates its efforts on helping hospitals and communities recognize that their primary priority is to determine how to sustain critical health care services locally. This may not include maintaining a hospital, but rather rightsizing care to match the resources, demographics, geography, and availability of providers in the community. The center works with hospitals and their communities to determine feasible health care options that will be supported by the community, meet community needs, and most importantly, offer local quality care. Health care providers and communities need to adjust to ensure availability, their ability to retain access to health care in rural America. Eighty-three U.S. rural hospitals have closed their doors since January 2010, leaving eighty-three communities looking for ways to retain access to health care. Rural facilities that have remained open are facing increasing legislative, regulatory, and fiscal challenges with an estimated fifty percent of them being financially fragile." This center works with rural hospitals across the United States that are vulnerable to closure with the overall goal to ensure continued access to health care for the reasons they serve. And that's, this is their webpage. "I doubt seriously that this study, or any other, will recommend that Franklin County build a multimillion-dollar hospital, plunging its taxpayers into debt for years and still have so few patients, sometimes none, that it will never be able to pay its bills."
Ma'am, your time up.
Thank you. Timed it pretty good, didn't I?
You done good.
Good morning, Commissioners. Alan Pfeiffer, concerned citizens, Franklin County. Yes, she always does good. I'm gonna be brief this morning. I'm really confused about whether you're the policy body or the Weems Hospital Board has become the policy body. Mixed signals coming out. There was, in the last couple of months, there was an economic impact study that came out of the hospital, a decision to go and seek a grant to have a one-year evaluation by Texas A&amp;M. None of this, that I think, came through or was approved by this policy body. In fact, what I thought was approved is a pending decision on which way the hospital will go. There has been no further negotiations with Sacred Heart since the day they sat here in front of the hospital board. It's as if they fell off the map, even though they are the most viable and ready off-the-shelf solution for us. I don't understand why we are not telling the hospital board what we want, rather than they starting to move forward to build a new hospital almost without even asking you. But that seems to be the plan at the moment by their actions. And I don't, I don't understand why you're not telling the hospital through a policy decision on how you want to move forward. That's my concern, and that's what I'd like to see you address, rather than the hospital board making independent decisions that can lead to a forty-year mortgage that we're gonna have around our necks for that period of time. Appreciate you listening to me this morning. Hope we have a good meeting. I hope the best for Franklin County, as I know all of you do. Thank you.
Public comments?
Good morning. Barbara McInturf. I live on the Hill. And I want to read something to you that you may be familiar with. You should be. "The mission of the Franklin County Public Library is to promote reading and lifelong learning by providing access to informational, educational, recreational, and cultural materials for all persons of all ages and to serve as a focal point for community activities." I'm here today to say that's not happening. It's not happening in East Point and it's not happening in Carabel. There are hours in East Point focused on people who are retired because their Monday through Friday, closed on weekends, and closed after five o'clock. So working-class people cannot get access to the library and kids can't get there in the evenings or on weekends to do their research. Now, I understand that comments been made that many kids and adults have cell phones. That's all well and good, so they can do the research. But it's very hard to fill out job applications by your cellphone. And the research, too, is limited. A computer is much, much better qualified to accomplish that task. Carabel is open from ten to two on Saturdays, so they're a little bit better. So having said that, I would also like to say this. Please tell me what I can do to help change this for the community. I walked over into a business over in East Point and there was five computer screens set up in their place of business. And I said, "What are those for?" And I was told, "For their kids and their grandkids to do their homework and do some research." And I said, "Is that because of the library not being open during the hours where they can go?" He didn't comment one way or the other. All he did was nod. And that spoke volumes. And it's just something you need to consider. Fortunately, Appalachia Cola has evening hours and it has weekend hours, and they are well-attended. So that's all I had for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments? Public comments? Next on the agenda will be Department Director Report, Superintendent of Public Work, Mr. Howard Neighbors.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
Good morning.
I got a couple, three items. We've been grading roads and stuff throughout the county, which we've got all of them graded out. We also been fixing the shoulders, intersection, potholes, which we started from the west end of the county going east. So we should be, as of tomorrow, should be in Carabel, in Allagot Point. And inmate situation is temperate here. If it's a certain temperature, they don't let the inmates out. So we didn't get them today, so good possibility we won't get them tomorrow neither. And I have one opening inmate supervisor position, which we hired Neshan Bankston, which will be our new inmate supervisor. He'll start next Tuesday, which he's already certified and all ready to go. And they got a crew waiting for him, so. And on our mosquito-controlled ditches, we got Scott, which has been doing mosquito-controlled ditches, which they started from the east end of the county. They in East Point now, which hopefully should be in Appalachia one day next week. That, with, one more thing, which I know, I know Mr. Williams heard about it, about Buck Street, where the road's washed into, which, like I told him, it's private road. We can't go in there, so.
Yep. I've been dealing with them. I think they said they gonna try to get Mr. Timmy Butler to help them or something.
Okay.
I talked with Michael yesterday about if we could give, help them some dirt or something, let them have a few loads of dirt, try to fix that corner. Us not touching it, just he gonna check on it for me and see.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Which I told him, you know, there's nothing we can do, you know, unless hire authorities, so.
Yeah.
It's private?
Yes, sir. Private road.
For the public record, Mr. Shuler, can you tell the people that, why we don't work on private road?
Well, Commissioner, the last time we made an in-depth look at the issue countywide for these private roads, the county take over the maintenance and the upkeep and the, we never even got to the cost of potential stormwater management. But when we got to about eight million dollars, we decided we... After we got to around eight, seven million dollars, the board abandoned the project because it was just far beyond our financial ability to treat everybody countywide who are on these private roads in a fair and equitable manner. We have also looked at, in the past, adopting an ordinance that would allow us to charge people the actual cost to the county for the work being done. But then all the private contractors showed up and filled the room up and says, "You're gonna put us out of business. My families depend on this. My, you know, I've spread money out into the community." So the ordinance was not adopted. So it's been a conundrum that we haven't been able to figure out. Other than during declared states of emergency, we are allowed to go onto private property.
Yeah, I know they calling me. I mean, trying to do best we can. They hollering, you know, they pay tax dollars just like we do. I understand they do, you know? But if we could figure out how we could give them a few loads of dirt, they said they would move it. Me and Buster been talking, might just need some dirt to go in that corner 'cause it's completely washed out. I mean, you can't even get a bus in there.
Right.
The school bus, they having to bring them out to the main road. And the ambulance went there the other day, they had to bring a child out to the main road 'cause they couldn't get in there behind the curb.
That's a terrible situation. I will look into it. I will see if any other county has figured out a different solution and I'll report back to the board. But, you know, the general rule is if you live on a private road, then the owners, you know, surrounding the private road are responsible for the upkeep, maintenance, and repair. Because otherwise, we do it for them, we got, I mean, every commissioner has got private roads in their district that the constituents want them to do the same thing. And that's why the board commissioned the engineer to prepare a cost estimate countywide. And they spent a lot of time and resources, you know, surveying the various private roads and coming up with a cost estimate just to try and bring the road up to a county standard, which if you want to take it over as a public road, it has to be built to a county standard. And that cost was, again, seven or eight million dollars we stopped counting. And that was before we got to the potential cost of stormwater management. That was just basically the dirt, the equipment, the manpower, the materials, and so that's where we are.
Mr. Chairman. I've had a lot of people ask me about their driveways going to their house. And I tell them the same thing about it being private property. So as we look at repairing private roads, can we also look at repairing private driveways going to these people's houses? Would be the same thing, right?
Yes, we can do curb cuts and things of that nature as you come off of the public road.
Yeah.
Up to the edge of the right of way, but we're not supposed to go beyond that.
But I mean, it's the same thing as if you went on a private road or you fixed somebody's private driveway. Still on private property, right?
I don't think there's any difference, Commissioner.
Okay, that's, so when we look at one, let's look at, you know, if we can do one thing, we can do it all. It's all private property. So, anyway, that's my comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to offer the residents sources of material where we get it from the county. Perhaps they know, perhaps we get a load of dirt for a deeper percentage than the regular public retail price. We have certain vendors that we use in the county, and we simply are a resource of information for the private property owner to go to the sources we go to. And perhaps there might be some sort of a discount that could be passed on, on behalf of what they want to do. Would that be something that would, at least we're giving them some positive feedback?
Commissioner, I think we could certainly give them the names of, you know, suppliers and vendors, but beyond that, there's really not much we can do.
That's right.
Because they're not governmental agencies. They're not going to get the governmental discount. And I doubt that they would be able to purchase in bulk the way the county does, but.
Okay. Okay, I understood.
Well, see, another thing is this, in the, when them people building these places, they should, the private, when they gonna have private road, private section?
Yeah.
The people who over there should have these roads and stuff up to standard before we pass. And we should make that, make sure that happen. Because, you know, if they not up to standard and they want to go a different route on the road later, later on, that, that gonna cause us problem like it doing now. So make sure that, that's why we got codes. That's part of our code, to make sure they up to standard. So let's make sure we doing that. And that could allow them.
Commissioner, frequently, these are unrecorded subdivisions where people have just, over a period of time, divided up larger tracts of land and sold them to people and built, you know, a form of access, you know, from the public road to the lots they're selling, but they're not built to county standards.
Yeah.
That's sort of the core of the issue here. If they went through the plating process, then they were required to build the road up to county standards before the plan is recorded. And if they don't do that, then they record or deposit with the board a two-year irrevocable letter of credit in an amount necessary. And if the county had to go in and build the road, then the county would have a bond that they could call on, and it would not cost the public, so.
I'd like that.
It's a terrible situation. I mean, we all acknowledge that. It is heartbreaking, frankly.
I'd like that situation we've been running through with the school. Be the same thing. Okay, well.
But I will look and see what other options may have, I mean, it's been a number of years since we looked at this. There could have been a change in the law. There could have been some person smarter than me that's figured out a way to solve this problem. But I will research it and report back.
Well, since, let me ask you a question. I guess since, since we do have ambulance, police cars, bus going through there, can we, can we donate a couple of dirt, loads of dirt? Will that be against the law?
Well, that's the, kind of, the heart of the issue, Mr. Chairman. And that's what I'm going to look at and report back to the board on. I don't have an answer for you this morning.
There you go.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, Attorney Shaw, also on that road, not to make it worse, but we're talking about that road in particular this morning. East Point Water and Sewer has a lift station down at the end of that road.
At the end of the road?
Yes, sir. At the very end of that road. That supplies, during the fire, that's where they were able to get water from to help fight the fire. So, and it is at the end of that road. I would think that makes that street a little bit different than the other street we're talking about.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Jones. I wasn't aware of that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, we have to wait till the lawyer get back with us and we'll make some kind of decision from there whether to be help or no help. That's the only thing I...
Good, that's good, eh?
Tell them we trying.
That's right.
You got anything else?
That's the end.
Anybody else got anything?
Howard, thank you for...
You're welcome.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you, Howard. Appreciate you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Under item, page eight, item twenty-two of my report, several questions have come up in regard to the bid specifications for the new Road Department Administrative, Administration Building. In order for staff to have proper time to review the questions and issue, and issue an amendment or provide clarification on the bid specs, I would like to ask the board to postpone the deadline for bid submission to Monday, March second, at four P.M. The bids will be open at, on Tuesday at your, I'm sorry, at your Tuesday, March third, regular meeting. We're asking for a month, a postponement of a month, to kind of work out some of the issues with the specifications.
Pleasure to both.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Masti. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passed unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good. Anything?
That's, yeah.
Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir. Have a good one.
Yes, sir. Next on the agenda will be Solid Waste Director, Mr. Fonda Davis.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I don't have anything this morning.
All right, all right. That's good. Anybody got anything for Mr. Davis?
Even swap. Nothing for you and you, nothing for me.
Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Pam Banaya, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. I do not have any action items this morning.
Good. Well, good. Anybody got anything for Ms. Banaya?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Ms. Pam, since we talked the other day, have we had any movement on any projects in the county for mitigation at all?
Okay. We had FEMA in our office last week. And if you can look at your list, these are things that are ready for reimbursement. We have to go back and, the way they explained it to us, the cost of your project, put it back the way it was, cannot be less than your, what you're wanting to mitigate it with. Okay? So we've got to go back and find where there's previous damage to these facilities to bring the cost of that project up. We can count previous storm damage to bring the cost of that project up, and then look at what it's gonna cost to do the mitigation. That's what they explained it to us. So we're gonna be digging into looking for records.
Okay. Well, the biggest reason I ask, and it's not really for me, it's generally public at large, because we know we have several things we're trying to work on. But when we update this list and have it presented to us in the future, instead of being grants portal PW number, can we list out what that is so people know what?
Oh, yeah.
We're talking about the East Point restroom?
Okay. I'll have Jeannie, yeah. Yeah, so everybody knows what it is. I can have Jeannie do that.
Thank you.
All right. Is they giving us any money to get?
You, yes, sir. We've had money come in. In fact, Jeannie has a check for Erin. It's not much. It's our small cat B, and she's gonna pull the documentation so you know exactly what it is. That came in Friday.
And we did get reimbursed a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for the final payment on Gulf Shore Boulevard, so that money's back in the ballroom trust.
Good.
Well, that's good, something coming in.
If you look at your list, those are things, that money is at the state. So we had the state there, so these things will start coming in. These checks will start moving.
Oh, is that the state and then Allagot County?
No, it's at the state. But they were there and made phone calls, so this money should start coming in pretty quick.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I got one.
Go ahead.
One comment real quick on this mitigation. You know, as I told you earlier, Pam, you mitigate to try to prevent damage in the future. But they're not willing to pay, FEMA's not willing to pay to do mitigation, prevent damage in the future. So you don't have a big claim the next time a storm comes through. You're saying that if we haven't mitigated before and have records where we mitigated before, then we cannot do mitigation, prevent damage in the future. To me, that seems like it's costing the federal government more money because while the, for example, C thirty road down here, it's tore up and just drops off into the bay, we want to mitigate that and put show, put the sand and stuff in front of it so it don't wash that road out the next tropical storm or the next hurricane you have. Well, they won't let you do that. If you haven't done it before, then you can put it back to the previous position it was in previously, which we have done that one time down there where C thirty's washed out right now, when Dan Rockwell was here. We gotta find those records. But I'm just saying, mitigation ain't worth a crap because they won't give you the money to mitigate to prevent further damage in the future.
No, they'll give you the money up to the value of the damage. So if you had a hundred thousand dollars of the damage, you can do a hundred thousand dollars of mitigation.
That's why we have to get our process.
That's, all that's doing is putting the road back.
We had the same problem.
Where it can be washed out again.
But it's a cost-benefit analysis they make us go through, and that's just...
So it's kind of like Allagot Point, right?
It is.
We think we gonna get any money to do a beach re-nourishment out there as part of mitigation. They're not gonna let you have the money for that.
That's right.
Right. We gonna put the road back, and there ain't gonna be nothing in front of it as far as FEMA's concerned. And it's just gonna wash out again. I mean, that makes no sense, because then FEMA's liable to put it back again and again and again. But it won't help you mitigate to keep that damage from reoccurring, is what I'm trying to say. So I just want to make that point.
I mean, all I can say is they have a cost-benefit analysis ratio that they will not exceed, and that is basically one to one. So if you had a million dollars of the damage, you can have a million dollars of mitigation. If you only had a hundred thousand dollars of damage, a hundred thousand dollars of mitigation. There's no way of getting around that. That is it, unless you go to another program. And we've had the same barrier on Allagot Point, unfortunately, it's not, it's a federal barrier.
Yeah, I mean, it just don't make no sense to me. I was just putting that out there for the public. Mitigation don't mean nothing to me no more because you're not getting no funds to mitigate future damage. And that's what I thought mitigation was supposed to be all about.
Understood.
But you're not allowed to do that.
It's, it's bad. I mean, you know, everybody know when you get the right storm, it's gonna wash C thirty out.
Yeah.
Everybody know when you get the right storm, Allagot Park gonna wash it. I mean, and you need a bridge on that end, and you need something to block that water on this end.
And to go back to Allagot Point, that's why we're having to look at other funding sources for Allagot Point for a beach or nourishment, because we know FEMA won't pay for the initial beach. That's just the way it is. And on C thirty, if in fact you want to do something else, FEMA's not gonna pay for. But once it's there... But once it's there, then it's eligible for damage.
Eighty percent.
Yeah. Well, well, depending on storm by least, but but we got to put it there. I agree. FEMA will not put a new structure in at their cost. But once we find a way of funding it, then they will help maintain it.
That's a good point.
So we got, we got to start the boat.
We ain't got no money.
Yeah, we got the wood.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Pam, and also Erin, can you bring us up to date? A year ago, we had suddenly depleted our reserves by five hundred thousand dollars relative to hurricane damage and so on. How are we doing in restoring that reserve back to its threshold?
I think we're doing pretty good. I mean, I know we still have some over, the overtime money. We're still waiting for that to come back, and that was one of the biggest hits to the general fund. Um, as far as with our insurance settlements, you know, that's actually, they paid out relatively well. Um, we still have a little bit more repairs to be done with some of the deductible money that we got, but for the most, we're, I think we're doing pretty good with the exception of the overtime funds that we need to have come back.
That's the first one that's on the list here.
Okay.
That was set with the feds, and last week she moved that.
Yeah, so your reserves have climbed back up. They are not being depleted anymore.
Yes. Yeah, I think, I think we look good. We actually, we're very lucky, you know, to not have any more damage because we had just enough where, you know, the insurance company came in, and we're also getting FEMA reimbursements, but we're not like our neighbors, you know, farther to the west where we just have the ability to recover.
Good.
And I'd like to, uh, the, the, because it leads into this. So, so we, the, the feds or the state asked for a damage assessment from the counties, and so we submitted some money for the hospitals, you may recall, and we are going to get two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars from the hospital uh because we actually didn't have as much damage. We, we had made an additional amendment, a request of about a million dollars because we found additional money at the hospital we lost. But Gulf County only got two million dollars total. Uh, some other communities only got a million dollars. So I was fairly happy that we got two sixty-six compared to the, the where we ended after the storm. So, yeah, things, things are for us, we're actually doing pretty well. I know the storm was devastating to a lot of people, but we have made significant strides recovering the financial losses to the county.
All right. Anybody else got anything for Ms. Banaya? Keep up the good work. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Eric Loves drain extension officer.
Come on, Commissioners.
Come on.
My apologies. I didn't even get my report to you for this meeting this week. I was off on annual leave last week and just having too much fun. But I did want to mention, make a public thank you to Mr. Fonda Davis and his staff because they saved our bacon with our move to the new facility. He had six or seven men show up and three trailers, and in about a half a day, they had moved everything out of three rooms at the armory and two offices at the courthouse, and it's just about all down there. So now we're sorting through and organizing and working on getting internet and phone service down there. And we should be operational here, and I'm, I'm hoping in a couple of weeks so we can have an open house event down there.
Anybody got anything else for Mr. Eric?
Just an observation. You know, when you mentioned how our Waste Management Department staff came and helped you, I see many, many stories about how we do this intra-departmental helping. I've seen men, tools, equipment exchanged and borrowed throughout our departments to save money and thresholds of budgets and so on. And I think that's one of those unsung things that happen that the public doesn't really see day to day and how it really does save our financial side.
I know it saved my back, too.
Sure, I understand. Absolutely.
Yeah, because we were hauling stuff down to like stairs at the armory to get it out of those rooms, one of those rooms over there. And I appreciated it very much.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda will be Airport Manager, Mr. Jason Puckett.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, the first item on my, on my quick report to you today is actually, I think it's going to be coinciding with Allen's report here in a few minutes concerning the access road improvement in his report.
Give me your name for the record.
Oh, uh, Jason Puckett.
Sorry, man. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we don't, we don't have a copy of your report, so we don't know what you're talking about.
Well, item number, what he's talking about is item number sixteen on my report.
Okay, well, let's go to that then.
Item number.
What, what pages your report on?
Page six.
Six.
Number sixteen.
Oh, so item number sixteen there is, uh, according to the board, AFCON Roberts. Roberts did success in completing negotiations, bringing the airport access road within the budget of eight hundred forty-four thousand dollars as a state grant that they're paying a hundred percent. Roberts, Roberts has signed the contract. Board actually signed the contract and assigned the notice per se. AFCON has listed the start date for the project as January twenty-first, which is tomorrow. The completion date a hundred eighty days, a hundred and eighty days later on July nineteenth, twenty twenty.
So move.
So.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Paris, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They're passing none of them.
That's good.
And the only other thing I had was I want to introduce Tara from Centric Aviation, and I believe she's going to introduce one of her new employees there at your FBO.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Tara Mon. I'm here with Shayna Segree today. We're with Centric Aviation. So we are happy to announce a recent promotion within our team. This is Shayna. She's a Carabelle resident. She grew up here in Franklin County. She started working with us about a year and a half ago. Um, we brought her on as a customer service representative, and then we sent her through NADA Safety First Professional Line Tech Training. She completed that successfully and has a certificate in that. She's become very well versed in the FBO operations and the airport operations. And so we are very proud to announce her as our new FBO manager.
That's good.
Your manager. Good. Congrats.
And then another, another quick announcement I have is that we're going to be hosting an event at the end of March. So you're going to start seeing flyers up. The E A A. has chosen our airport and our FBO to host the Ford Tri-Motor. It's a historic nineteen twenties aircraft. Rides will be offered to the public. You can buy a ticket online, and so we're hoping this will bring in a lot of visitors and tourists to the area at the end of March.
And E E A. stands for?
Experimental.
Experimental Aircraft Association. I know this is my brother-in-law is a member of it. So if you see strange things flying around in the air, it's probably E A A. Not UFOs.
So this should be a neat event. We're really excited about it.
So she'll be working at this office here?
Yes, she will.
Okay, welcome aboard.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tara, wait, that's, that's sort of two things way to, to the centric. One, I think they're doing a great job. We still need to work on the extension of the contract.
Yes.
Um, so I just say that, that we need to see if we can get those, that's wrapped up because they're doing a great job, and I appreciate them being out there and, and working with the community as well as they do. Um, we are still working to get the, um, the backup generator out there and the fuel farm improvements. I just make this an update, uh, so the public is aware of what's going on. The Triumph Board had looked at, looked at our project. We revised, revised, revised. We still couldn't seem to get in line with what they wanted. We met several times with the Triumph staff, and, and the last motion, last step by Triumph was to direct our application to D E O. Because D E O. was going to receive some twenty-five million dollars worth of interest money from Triumph. And that was by the direction of the governor. Uh, and I got that in a meeting that I had with several other people, with the chairman of the Triumph Board, Don Gates. So I've contacted D E O., and they're still waiting to get the money. So I, I, I'll be honest, I'm not sure whether the Triumph's interest money has to go to the legislature first, but, but the governor was trying to find a way to facilitate the expansion of, of the Triumph interest money because Triumph wasn't spending the principal fast enough, so it was like twenty-five million dollars worth of interest built up. And we are both a member of the Triumph as well as Hurricane Michael Recovery Area. So I feel like if D E O. gets the money, we have a good shot at getting, and the Triumph staff recommended that the D E O. fund our project. So I'm hoping that once D E O. gets the money, that we'll work our way out of this logjam because we can't seem to get forward with Triumph. Triumph's problem, and it's something that is a problem for Franklin, Gulf, and Willco counties. They have these expectations of job creation that is just unreasonable for these small counties. And, and there's a risk, although, you know, maybe we could take the risk of taking the money and then not meeting the thresholds. But if we do that, then they, they say they want the money back, and that's a risk we don't want to put ourselves into. So it's a constant problem for us counties, and I don't know, you know, we'll see where, where the legislature goes with Triumph in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have for today.
Anybody got anything else for Mr. Puckett? Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be the T D C. Director, Mr. John Solomon.
Morning, Commissioner John Solomon, T D C. Director. Um, I have a couple of action items on the agenda, and there's some informational. On January eighth, the T D C. Board motioned and approved the request of the approval of the four annual position seats on, on the board. And that was from the cities of Carabelle and Appalachia Cola and the two Chamber of Commerce's. Um, also, we had one expiring board member, Mr. Rex Penicuff. The T D C. Board motioned to recommend extending Mr. Rex Penicuff's membership. On the T D C. Board is the at-large seat through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four, and that would need to be approved or denied by the county commission.
So move.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Paris. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They're passing none of them.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, the second action item I have is the T D C. made a motion to make a recommendation that the director, myself, and or, and or the marketing chair, Mayor La Paz, be authorized to approve video projects done by a videography vendor, uh, which is currently F C T V. The current language in the video contract states the entire board must view and vote to approve the videos before they can be paid for or released. Um, in further investigation, talking to the clerk, we would have to ask that to get with Attorney Schuler if you also be it to amend that part of the contract in that language. Currently, it states that the whole board has to view it. The board wishes it to be done by, um, myself and the mark, uh, marketing chairman. Um, the whole board still views the video. It just takes another month out of the payment for F C T V or us being able to release the videos.
Ready to vote?
Mr. Chair. John, on, on this, on this issue, you got the T D C. Board made a motion to recommend that the director, John Solomon, and or the marketing chair. I don't really like that.
Yes, sir.
I'd rather have the T D C. Director. Once these videos are viewed by the entire T D C. Board and they, they approve that the work was done, done well, then it should be done by you and not and or. Uh, I don't like and or because what if you want to go ahead and do it and the marketing chair don't want to do it, or vice versa?
Yes, sir.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
If it's viewed by the total T D C. Board, then I think you as the director should be able to move forward and not and or. I, I don't, I don't really like the and or part.
No.
I don't know why that was put in there. I mean, you're at every meeting, right?
Yes, sir.
And you, and the board sits down and watches these videos, and if the board unanimously says we like the videos and we need to move forward and need to be paid for, then you as the director should take your direction from the board and, and move it forward.
Well, Commissioner, what the issue is, that's the way that it's currently working now. What it is, is when we have these videos come out, um, they, the board wants them. We want this video done after the meeting. They instruct Mr. Ralstad to do it. It's another month before we're able to view the video, and then another two weeks before we're able to pay F C T V. for the video being done.
Okay, what I'm saying is once the board's viewed the video and everybody's in agreement, yeah, this is a good one and needs to be paid for, then you ought to have the authority, the direction of the board to make that happen.
Yep, Mr. Chair.
You see what I'm saying? I'm not against what you're saying.
Oh, no, no, sir.
I don't like the and or the or. You can do it, or the marketing chair can do it. What, I don't understand.
If I may, uh, help clarify, what the, what the T D C. Board made a recommendation to do to amend the contract was to not have the wording in there where you have to wait for the whole T D C. Board to view it before it can be paid or released. They're trying to do it where, and that's why they included two. They were just trying to make the best recommendation possible. That's fine if, if y'all don't want it to be two. But they wanted it where our director could actually view the video, approve it, it could be sent for payment, then it would be shown to the board at the next meeting. As it is currently in the contract, the whole board has to view it before anything else can happen.
Well, what they're going to be doing, what you trying to say is just to them be able to view it and then recommend?
Well, to, in order for him to get payment.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what they're saying. And there's also an issue of how much the payment is, but that, that can be worked out. But it's just going by the wording that's in the current contract. They're asking for an amendment. So everything would be.
What you trying to show them the time to pay the people and make sure it's.
Well, when you run into a, a month like December, where we normally don't have a meeting, so it, it took, you know, more than the regular amount of time. It was that plus a month on video work that our vendor was asked to do by the full board. You know what I mean? He's waiting almost two months to get paid for it and be able to release it. Because until, the way it's currently worded, till the whole board views it and it can be submitted for payment, he can't release it or allow it to be seen. So it's, it's just, it's just dragging the process on.
So what, what, Mr. Chair. So what you trying to tell us is that the total board, whole board, uh, tells a videographer, a vendor to go ahead and do this.
Mm-hmm.
And Mr. Solomon is aware of what the board is asking to do. And if he views this video and he's done exactly what the board is asking to do, then he can go ahead and prove the payment.
Right. In the current contract, it'd have to be the whole, the video would have to be viewed by the whole board before he could submit for payment.
So basically, he would be able to view what was directed by the board.
Yes, sir.
If that is in that video that the board directed him to do, that he could go ahead and submit for proof of, or payment for.
That is correct.
Yes, sir.
So I think, but I still think it should be done by the director and not and or.
Right.
Yes, I'm just.
The director's the one I hold accountable to everything that happens with the T D C.
You and I both, sir.
And the director's the one I want to continue to hold accountable for what happens in this T D C.
And, and I think that was the intention of the board making this motion. They, again, they, why are we watching the video? We, this is what we told them to do. Why couldn't you tell them? I said, well, this is the contract. We have to follow the contract for S C T V. Which states they have to view it and vote to approve it before it can be released or, or paid for.
Well, people be needing their money for two months. I know that. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah.
If the board approves the amendment to the video contract, would making the approval for the payment and the approval of the video content subsequent to T D C. Board approval, would that bring it into line with how the other vendor contracts were administered? Would the, the executive director making the administrative decision to approve the content and the payment after the board has approved the project?
Correct. It would be, it would put in line.
So you're making all the contracts consistent with this amendment if you approve it?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve this contingent upon the director viewing the video and making sure that the video contains what the board has directed, not and or, but the director itself, and that's my, my motion on the floor.
I got a motion. He telling you, you the man with the bucket?
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Paris, second by Commissioner Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They're passing none of them.
Like in all the other contract cases, I am the one that approves the written ads and the.
And this one, too.
And now this one.
Well, I get them people paid. They need their money if they like me.
Okay, Commissioners, I have a couple of informational items. Um, the collections report for October two thousand nineteen. Um, collections were eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty, six hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-eight cents. This is the fifty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollar and thirty-nine cent, which is a hundred and thirty-three percent increase over October two thousand eighteen. Um, this is the second highest collections for the month of October in Franklin County T D C. history. Um, the one thing I can say it was last year was the hurricane, so that we should have had at least a hundred percent increase, but the hundred and thirty-three was a really nice number to see. That means we did increase over two thousand seventeen as well.
That's good. That's good. Yes, sir.
Um, the website activity, we had twenty-one thousand web hits in the month of December. It's a decrease of thirty percent over the last December, um, was expected. Um, the two thousand nineteen web hits total was three hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven. This is the highest number of web hits in our website's history by a great margin. So the numbers were up even considering that December was down a little bit. We had high numbers because of the hurricane. Everybody was seeing, going to the Forgotten Coast website to see what was going on um, in two thousand eighteen. the Forgotten Coast website to see what was going on in two thousand eighteen. The visitor center numbers, the visitor centers welcomed two thousand, two hundred and sixty-two visitors in the month of December. The total for two thousand nineteen calendar year was thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eight visitors, and that visitor centers. The total for two thousand eighteen was thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight, so we increased eight thousand visitors to the visitor centers this past year. One thing that I had mentioned in my last report that we do have confirmation on now, the Visit Florida Adventure Tourism Conference. They called and informed us that Franklin County was selected to hold this conference, April seventh and eighth, in the Fort Coombs Armory here in Appalachia Cola. So that's a big coup for us to get a Visit Florida Conference here in our county. The only other thing that I have, give to Mr. Morone earlier for the commission, and extra copies if needed. Our new software that we purchased, Key Data, it was approved a few months back by this Board. They do a yearly overview to make sure of, you know, the numbers and how you can compare yourself to other areas. The form we have in front of you is Franklin County versus the Florida-Alabama Panhandle. This would be from Franklin County all the way to Fort Morgan in Gulf Shores, Alabama. On the first part is the adjusted RevPAR, which is revenue per available room, and in the Florida, North Florida Gulf Coast, you'll see the numbers there. We were the only region that actually had an increase in our revenue per adjusted, per available room, which we weren't supposed to, but we did. That's a big thing. The other graph on the chart is the adjusted paid occupancy. The red line on the paper, you pointing up, Mike, or?
No.
Okay. The red line on the paper that y'all have is the Florida-Alabama Panhandle, and the blue is the Franklin County. And for our occupancy that we have, we, except for the month of April, we were head and shoulders above at the whole Florida-Alabama Panhandle. Again, we weren't supposed to. The average length of stay actually has increased by one day from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, and the, in comparison to the Florida-Alabama Panhandle, is only six days. We're nine days in Franklin County for the average stay. The average booking window increased sixteen days. That's how long far out people booked to stay here in Franklin County. And we were a hundred and fifty-eight days in two thousand eighteen. We're at a hundred and seventy-four days. They want to come here, and they want to make sure they get the rooms they're looking for. So that's a really positive number to see an increase in. And just comparison in the rest of the Florida-Alabama Panhandle is only seventy days. So they are confident they're making, they, they can find a room, but here, they're making sure they get where they want to be. So for, for the new software to be put in automatically, we're using it for a lot of different things, advertising and areas, but to get a report like this that shows that what we've been doing is actually working, is a really good thing to be able to share with the commission and with the TDC Board.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
You know, John, when I, this is very telling to me, when I see this review of all the neighboring cities and counties around this area. And it speaks very highly of the character and the, the look of old North Florida, Franklin County, and this area. And folks have an opportunity to, basically through a menu, go to venues that they want. We are unique and special, and your numbers are showing it. And this has a cascade on many, many things that we think about here in this commission. Talk about zoning, talk about waivers, and talk about all kinds of issues like that that we talk about. If we continue to consistently run with our plan of care, if you will, and the special characteristics that we have here in Franklin County, we're going to see our numbers increase more and more, just because of the diversity and the unique character that we are compared to other folks. And other folks have their unique characters, but we should sustain ours.
Yes, sir.
That's it?
Yes, sir. That's all I have, sir.
Anybody got anything else for Mr. Solomon? All right, y'all doing a good job. Keep up the work.
Thank y'all, sir.
Thank you, John.
I like the reports you make. We ain't, we ain't been like that before.
Yep.
All right, let's take, now we, we down to P and Z, right? Okay, she, y'all got it set up?
Okay, good.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda will be, Ms. Amy Keller, Ms. Amy Kelly, Board of Adjustment Report.
Good morning. We don't have a Board of Adjustment report this morning. We, we could not get a quorum.
Okay.
So we weren't able to do that meeting.
But a planning and zoning. Ms. Amy Keller, planning and zoning.
It's, yes, our Board of Adjustments. And, but I do have a planning and zoning report.
Okay.
Under the critical shoreline applications, we have a consideration of a request to construct a single-family private dock on property described as eight hundred Hickory Hammock Road, Carabelle, Franklin County, Florida. It will be a U-shaped dock consisting of a four-by-eight access walkway, and a six-by-twenty dock, and a four-by-twenty walk-around. The applicant has the Army Corps, Army Corps permit, but will be contingent upon the DEP permit. Request submitted by Timothy Small, he's the applicant, and there's a house under construction.
Ladies and gentlemen.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mass.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
And also this morning, we have a land use and rezoning application. It's a consideration of a request for a public hearing for a land use change of a one-point-two-three acre parcel from residential to commercial, and a rezoning from R4 Single Family Home Industry to C2 Commercial Business on property described as one thousand one Bluff Road, Appalachia Cola, Franklin County, Florida. It's the Bluff Road Storage Units. Request submitted by Charles and Fay Thompson applicants.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Paris, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
And then we have another rezoning request. Consideration of a request for a, to rezone twenty-two-point-seven-seven acre parcel from R1A Single Family Residential to R1 Single Family Residential on property described as Shell Bay Three D, lying in Section thirty-five, Township Seven South, Range Five West, twenty-one sixty-three U.S. Highway ninety-eight West, Carabelle, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates, Agent for William Simmons applicant.
I've got a question on this.
Go ahead.
Is Dan in? Just one quick question, Dan, that you might can answer for me. As I, as I look at all this-
Dan Garlick.
We're actually reducing density on these twenty-two acres?
Yes.
Because you're going from R1A to R1.
Yeah.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Paris, second by two, Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Mass. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Okay, we have a plat abandonment application. Consideration of a request to abandon the Shell Bay plat. This property is lying in Section thirty-five, Township Seven South, Range Five West, twenty-one sixty-three U.S. Highway ninety-eight West, Carabelle, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates, Agent for William Simmons applicant.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mass, second by Commissioner Paris. Got a little discussion, discussion.
I just want to make sure what I'm looking at. Is this the same piece of property that they just asked for a request to rezone?
That's correct.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, they're abandoning the plat.
Right, right, right. Okay.
The plat a little more density, that's where I was asking.
That's right.
I, I would think you probably would want to make that in the, there's one other item under two. You probably want to make that contingent on the public hearing being approved. So it's just something I'm offering.
Okay.
If you're standing right there when this next one comes up, you don't have to go back and come back, because I have a question on the next one, too.
Okay.
Commissioners, I wouldn't recommend making a contingent on anything. You're just moving forward, and whatever you decide to do, you decide to do, based on the facts that are before you, but the time that you have the hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Okay. Number eleven, we have a sketch plat application. It's a consideration of a request for sketch plat approval of a sixteen-lot subdivision named Shell Bay Subdivision on a twenty-two-point-seven-seven acre parcel, lying in Section thirty-five, Township Seven South, Range Five West, Carabelle, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates, Agent for William Simmons applicant.
Commissioner, I think you're probably premature in taking the action to approve a new plat of an existing platted subdivision. Maybe we need to table this one until you make whatever decision you're going to make on items number ten and eleven. We'll just hope, I would suggest that the actions of the P and Zs be held in abeyance until you make a decision on the other matters.
I concur with the attorney.
We, we can't, we can't approve a sketch plat of property that's already platted.
Okay, well, do we?
Reason, reason that we went through this exercise is to, I, I want to make sure I got through all the planning and zoning stuff instead of bouncing back and forth several times, so I just wanted to get to this level. And I agree with Mike that, you know, this could be tabled. We just want to make sure that we got at this level, so we don't have to go back and forth planning and zoning.
I want to, I need, we need a motion to-
Motion to-
For, or table, at the, attorney advised. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mass.
So moved.
Second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
All right, let's, let's take a break.